Good evening and welcome to the Plen and Commission meeting of March the 26th. Could we have roll call, please?
Chairperson Rick Diaz.
Here.
Vice Chair Stone James.
Here.
Commissioner Gloria Franz. Commissioner Kenneth Weller.
Here.
Commissioner Joan DeZerl.
Here.
Gloria, could you lead the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introduction of staff, Joe.
Yes, staff this evening is Planning Secretary Evelyn Beltran, City Attorney Shiri Kleema, Police Administrative Officer Ben Getron, Fire Marshal Dale Fraley, Principal Civil Engineer Juan Raya, Senior Planner Daniel Arvizo, Planning Technician Juan Rodriguez, Assistant Planner Leila Nambar, and myself, the Development Services Director Joe Lim, forgetting who I am.
Okay, we've got minutes for February the 26th, 2014. Do we have any additions, corrections? Entertainer motion. Make a motion to approve. Here a second.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
I like to abstain, I was absent.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, one abstention. And we have the minutes of March the 12th, 2014. Any changes or additions or amendments? Motion to approve. Here a second.
Second.
Stone. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. This is the public comment segment, and this time is set aside for public comment. If you wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form and limit your comments to three minutes. Forms are located in the lobby of the Council Chamber. Please watch the timing device on the podium. I don't...
I'm going to say one.
Okay.
Got behind somebody didn't know how to drive, I guess, that they were trying to figure out right out front here. Anyway, my name's Lynda Beal, and just want to remind you about the Heritage Festival that's going to be this Saturday, March 29th, Freed Mission, at our Coachella Valley Historical Society. It's going to be from 10 to 4:00. They're going to ride around, they're going to look at our murals around town, they're going to have all kinds of special displays, and it's just, a lot of the different museums are going to be represented there in the valley. It's just going to be a really fun day, so just remind everybody to come to that. They still need a few volunteers, possibly to drive around and explain about our beautiful murals. So if anybody wants to volunteer for that, give them a call at the museum. Thank you.
Thank you. Having no other request to speak, we'll close the public comment section and go to the public hearing. And the first item, the general plan conformity.
Honorable Chair members of the Planning Commission, Daniel Arvizo, Senior Planner. This evening, I'm presenting on the finding of general plan conformity for a property located along Highway 111, at the corner of Smur and Highway 111. That's the north-east corner, northwest corner, sorry. The site is a 12,191 square foot property, and this conformity is a request, or there's two things that's triggered this conformity coming before you. One is the development agreement with the developer, and the second is per state law, which requires that no real property shall be disposed of until it is found in conformance by the planning commission. As you can see on this exhibit here, the project site is located in the general plans community commercial area, which is this area here, and under community commercial, restaurants are unallowed use. This item has been found categorically exempt from SEQA, and therefore staff is recommending approval. That concludes staff report.
Any questions of staff? I have one. Could we by any chance have the names of the people on the successor agency, so we'll know who they are?
City council members are the successor agency.
Okay. On the committee that gets, that, in other words, sells new properties that were previously redevelopment, aren't they governed by somebody else?
Well, the state oversees it, and they have to approve any disposition of properties, and the oversight board is the one that is appointed.
By the county.
Right, et cetera. There are a number of members from county, the taxing agencies, I think the college district, school district, school district, and then two local members are appointed by the mayor for the oversight board. But the successor agency is made up of the same city council members.
Okay. So they have already approved this too, or?
That is, isn't that going?
Successor.
Okay, yes.
Close to oversight board.
Goes to oversight board tomorrow. Successor agency did take an action on this item already, last week.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, we'll open the public hearing. And since the city is the applicant.
We move approval.
Okay.
All right.
Well, actually, the successor agency, right.
Sorry, I can't motion, that would be a recommendation.
I don't have any request to speak on this particular item. We'll all close the public hearing.
May I make a motion to approve?
Not without a lot of discussion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion at all? Then we'll have a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, hearing none, and passes unanimously. Now we will go to the second item, which is the Indio Plaza Luxury Apartments Design Review, DR 14-1-373.
Before Leila gets started in the presentation, I do want to just make a note, staff is going to be, will be requesting a continuance of the item, so that we can properly notice a conditional use permit that would be necessary in order to approve the height of the project. It was an oversight on staff's part for not including that as part of these initial entitlements, so this will give us an opportunity to do so and properly notice the height, or address the height issue, in exceeding the 35 feet maximum height without a conditional use permit. This would also give the developer an opportunity to hear some of your questions and comments, if there's anything that needs to be addressed in the next two weeks, that could be done so between now and, what is the next meeting date, April 9th? So with that, I'll turn that over to Leila.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Leila Nambar, Assistant Planner. The project before you is Indio Plaza Luxury Apartments. It's a design review. The site is generally located south of Bliss and east of Oasis Street, north of Civic Center, and north of the current College of Desert campus, which is located here, and the city hall basically located here. This is the site. This area is the footprint of the building. So the ground level is the parking for the residences under building, and also the retail and restaurant, potential retail and restaurant for future. And it includes 69 market-weighted apartments, which will be on the second, third, and fourth level. The project includes amenities such as pool, barbecue area, clubhouse, fitness area, trash chute, elevators, covered parking, basically under the building, and also within this parking area here. This area is also, also includes parking stalls for the visitors of the project, or for the people that may use the retail space. There are two entrances to this open parking area, one from Bliss Street and one from Civic Center. There are also car access on Civic Center and Bliss Street for the covered parking under the building here. The main entrance, I mean, walking main entrance is through here, which basically people can enter to the building and get to their sales office, or if they need to go to their units, they can use the elevator and go up. There are also other walking accesses through parking area here, here, and also through The site includes landscape and the perimeter, and then the set, basically the setback, the front, the street front is setback of the building is 15 feet. This area that you, it looks like maybe, it may look like it is part of the building, it is not, it's just an awning, metal awning, which I show it to you on the elevation. And also there is, the public right-of-way is also 15 feet here. So a street is here, and then beside the street, there's 15 feet public right-of-way, which includes the sidewalk. The sidewalk on Oasis is 10 feet, and the sidewalk on other sides are eight feet wide. The access to the pool area is, the pool area is actually been enlarged on this corner. The access through the pool area is through here, and there's a sliding door that people can get to the pool area. There are also restroom facilities for the people, the residences that will use the pool area. And the pool area is also being fenced off by a combination of block wall and rod iron, and also with landscape area. There is an area for barbecue as well here. This is, these are the elevations. Bless you. As I mentioned previously, there are 69 units, one and two-story units, and then 60 of them, they have balconies, and nine of them, because of the location of the units, they don't have balconies. The height, the first 11 feet actually is the parking area and the retail, and then on top of it, we have three stories at 41, and then this portion up to the 48, is basically some type of architectural projections. As you see here, the roof could be flat, but in these areas, it's been designed in angle. This is the other elevation. This also shows the perspective of the, perspective view of the building. This area on the bottom is the pool area and also the retail, and this is from the other side, the same way you see the pool area at the far, and then this area is the retail section. In this slide, you see all four elevations together, so it kind of like gives an overall sense of how the mass will look like. As far as the design, the project, oh, and then in here, you will see basically the first level, which is the parking and retail, the second level, third level, and fourth level, and it shows the configuration of different apartments, one bedroom units and two-bedroom units. As far as the design, the project meets, except the height, it meets the, I'm sorry?
You can take that off.
Okay, so I'm not going to go through this slide, because we are recommending the continuance, but as I said, as far as the design, except the height, the project meets most of our provisions. And that concludes the staff report. I'd be happy to answer if you have any questions from me. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? Yes, Joan.
I had one. On looking at the landscaping part, I couldn't figure out all the green, I don't know if they just did that for effect, or if that's going to be grass, because I'm real concerned with our drought and everything, if we're going to be putting grass around those areas, or if that's just indicating they're going to put plants of some kind in that area.
At this point, this is a conceptual landscape. It will be a desert scape type of landscape, and as you see it in the other slides, in the perspective, you can get a bare feel that there are some shrubs. They're showing some type of grass here, because some of them are existing, but basically when they, when it comes to the time of the final landscape review, those are the things that we will address there. But the intent is to put some type of desert scape, minimum maintenance, minimum water required type of landscape.
Okay, thank you.
Your work.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. Can we go back to the picture of the, just face elevation of it? Okay, that's good enough. Are these unit, the air conditioning units, are they going to be on the roof?
They will be on the roof.
Okay.
And then that's where you have these sections here.
So that's a screening for the air conditioning units?
Correct.
So all we have then is a parapet that goes around there, and maybe a tile piece on the edge of it, is that what we're looking at?
The parapet actually is almost seven feet tall, so if you're looking at the 41 to 48, you're getting some, something close to seven here.
Well, I know, I can see the height, but what I want to know is, what's this element right here?
Which element, sorry?
I think he's, he's asking, is this a full roof structure all the way across, or is it?
Open.
It's open, I believe, on the, on the top, so these, look, it's to add architectural enhancement with the angle, it's not a full roof all the way across at that angle.
It is not.
All I'm seeing is a parapet on three sides, basically, but what is this element right here? Is it tile, is it?
Everything is painted stucco. And I don't think the, as you see here, there is no tile, it's basically painted stucco with balconies and awnings.
Well, that doesn't, we're looking at this roof over here.
There's no tile.
There's no tile.
Okay.
And are you talking about specifically that?
Well, I think it's going to be more this one right here, the sloping one on this one, and that one, that could be that one there, too.
You're asking what, what?
What is that element? What is it going to be?
It is.
Maybe something we can get that clarified between now and the next week or some, sometime? Maybe a better illustration.
And also to your first question, as you can see here on the roof, that angular roof doesn't go through, it's just right around here, so that's...
I guess my second question, without having to count, how many units are on any given floor?
Be 13, I believe, because there's six, oh no, I'm sorry, 20, 23.
And what is? And what is the furthest distance from the elevator to the most remote, most remote unit? We only see one elevator here.
No, it's probably about 150 feet, because the entire length of the building is about 168, and if you're walking around, the farthest point would be these units to the elevators.
Right.
So the entire length is 168, so if you were to walk this corridor, it's probably about that 150 to 160 feet.
I'm just thinking, if I'm, if I'm living in a unit like that, that's a long way to have to cart furniture and moving in and groceries.
You should have seen the apartment I had in college.
So maybe we could take a look at?
You had a parapet wall, right?
Maybe we could take a look at, do we need other access or something like that? I mean, where are the stairway accesses coming off of these units?
There's stairways.
One there?
Both ends, on these three corners, I believe.
So the highest you have to walk up is four floors?
Four floors.
Four floors.
Correct.
Yeah. One of the requirements we've been talking about in the downtown specific plan is having more art associated with significant projects. And we have the COD building pretty close to this, I don't remember seeing any art piece associated with that, nor do I see anything associated with this one also. Has it been given any thought to creating some form of an art piece to go along with this?
We had not had that discussion with the developer. I mean, they would be subject to paying, either installing art or paying the art and loo fee.
Right.
It is certainly their prerogative if they would like to put something in space, dedicate an area. There is a possibility on the, probably more on the east side than the west side in this particular case. It could also be something on the roof structure of the retail is a possibility, but that has not been discussed with the developer.
I guess for the, for me, I'm, go back to the elevations, please. This is a pretty tall structure that's going to go from property, basically almost property line to property line all the way around, very tall. And for me, these colors, and I don't know if they're exact or not, but the terracottas and the gold, is that a gold or a green? I don't know what that is, but it does resemble something fairly dark. And when I, personally, when I've got something that tall and that dark, it's going to, it's going to be very, very noticeable versus having something that's a little more muted colors, that might go a little bit more harmoniously with the COD building next door. Something that gives it some continuity maybe in colors versus having this building stand out, stand out like this. So for me, colors may be a little bit too dark for a building this tall that sits that close to the, to the street.
I agree with Commissioner Weller, that was one of my observations. I thought that they tried to do some good, good things with the architecture. Didn't, I didn't think the side elevations did them justice at all. Thankfully, the perspectives, I thought those were more reasonable, but yeah, my definite concern is, as Commissioner Weller pointed out, I also think that such bold colors are going to fade in the sun, and I think, you know, in a few years, it's going to look, look tattered. With something that's nice, we really need to make sure that this is a lasting piece of work.
And I think because this doesn't really fit into what the theme of the current Old Town specific plan is, that there really needs to be some discussion or some direction on how we're going to start addressing buildings in the downtown area, whether we're going to go to a more modern look, or whether we're going to go to a different look, whatever they want, but for me, it's still ambiguous as to what do we want the downtown to really be? Is it modern? Is it old? According to what they had before, 1950s look, you know, that's dated. And I got, in a discussion we had a little earlier, we're talking about who are we building these for? What is our clientele? Are these younger kids? Are they families? You know, whoever this clientele is, what are their needs, and does it fulfill their needs? So for me, it's something that fits everybody else's eye, I can go along with that. I do like the palm trees, I do like the row of palm trees down here, I think that's going to be very nice. And I guess the other piece I'm still concerned with is my elevation, what do the storefronts look like? I really can't tell from the elevations that we have, what really will the storefronts look like?
Go to the other one.
These are your storefront on Oasis, so do you have basically the same thing that you see everywhere? All's, it's glass doors with metal awning on top of it, so on the perspective, probably you can see it better, so the glass windows and this metal awning, so kind of like modern industrial look, can see?
Maybe the, maybe the architect could provide us with a little better rendering of what that front view looks like, whether we, you know, because you got to worry about, I can put signage on there, above the doors, next to the doors, whatever it's going to be, I'd like to be able to see, do we have space for signage?
There is, going back to your question about the roof, if you can go back to the perspective, there is, I'd say the, and the architect, I don't believe the architect is here, but those elements are an element that was used significantly in the 60s and 70s as far as architecture. I can't remember the architect that came up with that particular design. Fairly low-level roofs, even though it's on a very tall structure, but the slope of those roofs.
Well, if I'm, if I'm correct, this elevation is on Oasis Street?
That one would be, no, Civic Center?
This is Oasis Street and that's Civic Center. This is Oasis, this is also Oasis, and this is Bliss. So you basically see Oasis from north and south.
What I have on Oasis, which is facing directly west, there's a lot of open glass without any protection whatsoever that heats up these units, so have we thought about using any kind of protection over those windows that provides screenage?
These are protections, these are protections here.
Over that?
Yes, one, two, three, and throughout the whole building, and the same way the other side.
I think there, that was one of the things that I noticed, it was not along the top.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if, if.
Doesn't have it on the bottom. It doesn't have the second two floors down.
Yeah, they're, those are missing, so I didn't know if there's a way, obviously, maybe there was an architectural idea behind this, but from a practical standpoint, I didn't know maybe if there's something that could be modified there, without disrupting the.
On the design.
Or, Leila, was that just potentially an unintentional omission?
Yeah, some of these, some of these windows you see are recessed, and you've got projections that may also provide some shading from the adjacent windows or entry, or patio covers, rather. As far as this side, these are somewhat exposed, these particular ones, but you also have, as Commissioner Weller pointed out, a four-story building adjacent to it, which is the College of the Desert, that also doesn't have necessarily all the windows covered, per se. that also doesn't have necessarily all the windows covered, per se.
That students, they can just bake in there?
They're young.
They're sleeping anyway. It'll build some character.
Keep them awake. That's all the questions I have right now.
I think some of your other questions, the developer is here to answer any questions when you're done with staff questions.
Was there, did you have...
Yeah, I just have a quick question. There are several versions of color, because of course it's ink and design and stuff. But the one in the very back is a lot lighter than all the other ones. So I think it really would be nice to know which one is more accurate because we don't have a color code or anything.
The one that you have in your hand is the one that we are showing here. Of course, you know...
Depends on the ink?
The projection, and then it's not, nothing been harmonically calibrated. So that's why you see it from page to page and device to device a little bit different in color.
Okay, so I do agree that we should have the color actual palette when we come back into it. I'd like to see an actual, what the real color is versus trying to figure it out from which printer printed which piece of paper.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I had one on the, to Ken's question. When the general plan was put together for the downtown, did we have any theme in mind? I know like when I lived in Ventura, they had a particular look they were going for in downtown. Have we, other than trying to revitalize it, have we had any kind of particular? Was there anything in the general plan that said we want a particular look?
The general plan does not specify any themes. The specific plan alludes to various themes in the Old Town and the history of the downtown, but again, doesn't specify a particular theme. The specific plan, we're going to be, we are undertaking a specific plan update and we hope to further refine those through this commission's recommendation, the city council, in that process. But that'll be, I believe, coming back to you, maybe later mid-year, something like that.
Yes, we do have a workshop April 17th, and we look forward to seeing all of you there.
I think one of the things that we discussed, of course, was when the law library issue came up, and that was California Mission, what we tried to strive for at that time. And I think that's what Ken was referring to. One of the things that I, you know, I noticed right away is that in the staff report, it says elevators, which is plural, and you mentioned elevators plural too, and there's only one elevator. But I agree with Ken that there seems to be quite a distance on the elevators to all the units and all the floors, obviously. So that's something we'll discuss. And what I'll do now is open up the public hearing and hear from the applicant.
My name's Charlie Knickerbocker. The last thing that I want is to have this meeting put off. What did you want to...
Talking to the microphone, so we...
What did you want, Joe? You wanted to, what was the word you used?
Or we need to obtain a conditional use permit, has to be...
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about you, I'm here because I'd like, I'm hearing the comments. Obviously, there's comments where you don't like this project, okay? It's up to me to figure out how to change this. But I don't want to be put off to another planning commission meeting. I'm trying to get this thing going. I have investors, and I've been on this for a long time, have had great cooperation from staff, I'm not talking about that. But if you, I'd like to leave here where you either approve this or don't approve it. And if you're not going to approve it, let me know now, and then I'll have staff tell me why. Because it's just going on too long. Now, for interest, Mr. Weller, you had a lot of comments here, very negative comments. Some, we could probably handle, others, we can't. And if this is the type of project that you don't want downtown, if you don't want it next to the college, then darned, I should have known this a long time ago. And as far as the conditional use permit for the height, I talked to Joe. And I can understand where they're coming from. But it's kind of ludicrous, all of a sudden, to have a four-story building next to you and you can't, and you're nowhere near the height of that building, and now we're going to put this off because we need a CUP. Okay, if we need a CUP, fine. But I don't know why this body right here can't either approve or disapprove of the project. If you approve of it, I don't know why in the world you couldn't say conditional upon getting a CUP approved. It's, obviously, I'm extremely frustrated at what I hear. I thought we were further ahead than we are. That's why I came tonight, and I want to let you know I'm getting nothing but cooperation from staff. But if you want all of these changes, you're talking about major changes, major construction changes, obviously, you don't like the looks of that. Obviously, you don't like the colors. Okay, the looks are going to be hard to change. Colors, no. We can, if you want the colors that are the same color as the new college, that's no problem, we can do that. You talk about, are we catering to families? No, we're not catering to families. I'm not saying families can't be there, but these are one- and two-bedroom apartments. These are called walkabouts. This is where the people living there can walk to work, can walk to restaurants, can walk... It's a Chicago concept, if you will. And as far as having some type of definition that you want on the front of the building, on the stores, we can do that. That's not a big deal. So that's all I'm asking. If you're going to disapprove it, disapprove it. But I am asking you to approve it with a condition of a height CUP.
Mr. Knickerbocker, to answer one of your questions about the conditional use permit and all that kind of stuff,
Right.
why we have to have another meeting, I'd like to have our attorney explain that, what the law says, what we have to do.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I think, first of all, the conditional use permit is required for the height. And in order to have the conditional use permit public hearing, we need to notice it appropriately in the newspaper and in different locations. And so I don't know that there's going to be much of a difference in terms of timing as to whether they approve now a design review with a condition for a conditional use permit, in which case you'll need to come back for a conditional use permit at a future public hearing. Versus if they, for example, what staff's recommendation is to continue, and then we can notice the public hearing right away tomorrow or whatever, and at the next meeting have the public hearing both for this design review, continue this design review and the conditional use permit, and you'll have the whole package, I should say, by that time. I don't know that the timing is going to be any different for you because the design review won't necessarily be approved without the conditional use permit.
I understand what you're saying, and I've talked to Joe about this. I understand that legal part. What I'm asking for is to get a design review. I'm hearing a lot of negative comments up here about this project. If that's going to stop getting approval for a design review, then I'd like to know it now. I understand the two weeks, you know, and I understand that part of the law. Had that happened before. And it's not going to change the timing. But what's going to change the timing? If all of a sudden this body is disapproved, is not approving this project? Wow, that's a different, now we're talking about a lot of time. We're talking about months now.
Well, if I may, too, and the commission can speak freely. From what I'm hearing from what some of their comments are is they'd like some additional information, which might, in the next two weeks, that could be provided, particularly as it relates to color, it sounds like. And maybe some information about the roof line, what the materials are. I think those are reasonable things that can be asked of, to provide to them in this two-week period, while we know this also for the conditional use permit. I don't, again, I don't hear anyone necessarily saying they're opposed to the project as much as they have some concerns related to the colors and certain details, including the retail. So is that a reasonable summary of what I've heard of this commission?
Well, since I was the one, I guess, who spoke the most, let me say that I have no problem with the project. I like the multi-use piece of it. I like the apartments. I like where it's located. I just have some questions about what I think it's really going to look like when it's finished. My job setting here is to take a look at these projects and say, do they fit within what the city is designing for the future? And I needed some questions answered, and I didn't think that they were that, to make you feel that you didn't, I didn't want the project. They're just questions of how do we, how's this thing really work in my mind?
I agree with Mr. Weller. I think that when I first saw this project, I was excited to see you coming before us with this. I think it's a great idea, and I think it would set a wonderful tone for the city. I feel bad that you feel that we've taken such a negative stance on it because that's not been the case. This is the first time we've seen the project. And so it's not like we've had these comments, you've been involved in this for a long time. I know the development process quite well, and I can appreciate your frustration. This is the first time we've seen this. And, you know, as I see it, I think we have two major clients that we serve. We serve the citizens of the city, and then we also serve the developers and the business owners like yourself. And we have to manage both of those. And so I think that Mr. Weller's comments, I only can, I believe Mr. Weller's comments were meant in a good faith and in good nature of, hey, we've got a great project here, but there are some concerns that we need to address. And I think those things need to be addressed. But, you know, with that said, rest assured, at least for myself, I think this is a great concept, and I'm glad you're here.
Thank you for that. Let me explain why I thought I was coming here tonight to find out if the project would be approved or not by this body. Obviously, you have concerns. And things like the color and these things, that's not a big deal. When you start asking if you want another elevator, huge deal. That's something different. That's a complete, complete change. And why I wanted to get some kind of approval, even conditioned on having a proper documents that we have to have, it's for my investors. I have gone on and on and on with this for months and months and months. And I'm right at the point where we, I thought we had everything done except going through this body. We didn't know about the height thing until recently. And so that's what I was trying to get, so I can go to my investors tomorrow and say, okay, now we have approval conditioned on certain things. If that can't be done, it can't be done. But that's what I was trying to accomplish.
Any other comments? Any other questions of the applicant at this point?
He wanted to know...
Well, she hadn't put one up here, I didn't know.
Sure.
Mrs. Beal?
I'm Lynda Beal, I live close to downtown here. Well, a lot of the aspects of it look pretty neat. I was wondering on this, because I can't see some of the things or visualize them, is there a drainage area? And where would that be? Is there...
Retention, Mason?
Retention. I was just curious to where that was.
Undergrounded.
Underground? Okay, like the, does the college have it underground too? Is that theirs?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And actually, how many staircases are there? I was sort of, were there two or...
There's four or five.
There's four? I was just curious, how many staircases?
There's either four or five, because they're...
Four or five?
There's two on each, I believe, on each side. And then on one side, they have two, and then they have either two or three on the other side. I can't remember, but there's a bunch of them.
Oh, okay. I was just curious where those were. And this is going to be mainly for, not mainly for families, I guess.
No, you said you weren't catering to families.
Wasn't catering to families. Is there, so there wouldn't be like a play area or an animal walking area or... Something like that? Okay. And it would be the desert scape, which is nice to have, which we're all going to have to go to. But I agree with you, I think the color could be lightened a little bit. That would make it look nice, especially here in the desert. And I know we're going to need, you know, we're going to need some nice housing with our College of the Desert right here. And maybe that'll be mainly catering to college students and maybe young professionals too, with our new courthouse and things being, you know, all of that being renovated and fixed up, so, well, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this project? Is there anything else that you wanted to add? I'm going to continue. So you have some comment?
Want to speak? So one of the things I'm trying to think around the corner on, understanding Mr. Knickerbocker's concerns, I think Joe had a great idea earlier, and that was to go through the project and get maybe the opinion of each of the planning commissioners in terms of, you know, any concerns that they may have or anything that they're really excited about, so that all of those things can be out on the table for Mr. Knickerbocker, and so that he can, you know, go through those things, identify the things that can be addressed and address those, so that the next time he comes before the commission, there's no surprises.
Commissioner, if I may, you can certainly ask him questions and sort of offer general feedback. I just ask that we not give any indication of the vote, of your votes, approval or denial in advance of the actual vote or in advance of your discussions after the public hearing.
I think that's an important point. Thanks for reclarifying that. So my thought was really just one of just each commissioner going through and identifying just some of the thoughts or some of the concerns they had. For example, mine were, you know, the presence of window shades on all the windows, not just the top floors. What were the statuses, some of the dark colors?
But I think it looks good from what I can see, you know, but that's, pretty much, we're right on the money with what you were talking about.
Okay. Joan, do you have something?
Just the same, the desertscape landscaping, that was my biggest concern on that.
Ken?
No, I think I've made all my comments.
Okay. I've taken notes of all the various comments, and I was going to go through them so that we can make sure, we try and get some of that for you prior to the next hearing.
Now, one of the things that I was going to bring up, other than the fact about the elevators, is that there's only one, is if you aren't going to be putting in a second elevator, or don't want to put in a second elevator, is to make sure that the elevator that does go in is a fast elevator, and not like you're going to go to China and it takes three days to get to the third floor.
I think that's a good, a good consideration.
Because with, you know, that many people, there are going to be a lot of people standing on floors if it's a slow elevator.
We put one in, a very similar project to this at Cathedral City around the Mary Pickford Theater, same, same idea, same, and we put a large.
You have to come up to the podium and.
Oh, I didn't, I'm interrupting, I shouldn't.
No, that's okay, we're still open, Mr..
This is totally appropriate. Your comments are totally.
I just wanted to make sure there weren't ropes inside the elevator, that's all. And there's a specific word for them. We're going to have a motion to continue.
Staff recommends leaving the public hearing open and continuing the item.
Yeah, leave the public hearing open.
So we would be continuing the item to April 9th, 2014, at 6:00 PM at the city council chambers?
Correct.
If that's your motion, commissioners?
I'd like to make that motion to continue it, subject to reappearing on, or subject to our next meeting, at what day?
April 9th, 2014, at 6:00 PM in the city council chambers.
Perfect.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously, and we are.
Can I just ask one question? I'm sorry. And that, are we to have this, get it to you, Joe, and to get all these things done, or are we supposed to bring that to the April 9th?
If you bring it to staff, so that we can provide it to them in advance, that would be tremendous.
Go through the list.
I can go through the list. Better illustration of the roof was one of the items that the commissioners brought up, so, understanding what materials it may, would be made up of. They've already noted, you know, the colors, and preferring something lighter than what's being shown on the current elevations. Rendering or detail of the retail area, showing, I'm guessing, showing some heights of the facades, so that they can, you guys can understand where the signage would go and that there's sufficient space. Any further window covering or shading of those windows, particularly on the western and the southern elevations in particular, and then any additional details related to the planting and desertscape. And lastly, just answering the question related to the elevator, we'll actually look into it to make sure that it will sufficiently meet building code as well.
And also the use of date palms. Please. Versus the, a fan palm.
Also like to suggest that we keep the, the documents currently that we got.
Yes.
And have the new ones, so we can compare when we get the new package. With that, do we have any planning commissioner items?
I just have a question. You alluded, Daniel, to a meeting, a workshop on the 17th of April. Do we have a time yet for that?
We're still finalizing the time, but it looks like it will start late morning and go through mid-afternoon.
So just kind of block the, the whole day out?
Right, you can, we're probably going to encourage tenants from at least two commissioners per each. There's three components of that workshop, so we're going to encourage me, that each, or at least two commissioners attend, at least one of them.
Okay, thanks.
You'll, you'll email us and let us know, and all that information.
Yes, as soon as we finalize it, we'll send it out.
And Daniel, my memory's a little hazy. What was the name of that workshop?
That is for the downtown-specific plan update.
Staff items?
None.
We have a meeting on the 9th? Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Adjourn.
We built you a good project.
Thank you.
Joe, you have a.